The presentation, it'll come in a follow-up email. And hopefully, at the end, we will have a little bit of time for questions and answers. And I'm going to give it to Alyssa, so we don't run out of time.
Well, good evening. Thank you all so much for joining us tonight to talk about our COVID vaccine, or talk about our COVID distribution plan. My name is Alyssa Harris. I am the interim health director for Rowan County Public Health. And with me, I have Francesca, if you want to introduce yourself.
Hi, everyone. My name is Francesca Dubay. I am a CDC Public Health Associate, working with Rowan County.
Wonderful. So we're really excited to have Francesca with us. She's going to talk a little bit about the spread of COVID, and then about the vaccine, how the vaccine works, and those sorts of questions. But what I'm going to jump into today is to share about the background, about where we are with COVID, and sort of how vaccine distribution happens from the Rowan County Health Department perspective. All right, here we go. So this is our current situation. Obviously, we have been really going through a hard time with COVID. We've had a lot of increased cases, especially after the holidays. We really got hit hard. Our hospital systems were hit pretty hard. We're finally starting to come out of that. So we still have, you know, over 14,000 total cases. Rowan County is still considered red, which means that we have a critical, we're critical, or we have a critical community spread happening, which just means severe community spread. We've had 269 deaths. Right now, we have 791 active cases, which has actually decreased a lot from where it was just a couple of weeks ago. From the county alert system, which is kind of off by two weeks, we had a 14.2% positivity rate from our cases, from all the testing. Right now, the daily number is 9.2%, which is great. That's the direction we want to see it going in. And what we're seeing is that North Carolina, as a whole, still is pretty high in terms of COVID cases. I think we're top six for new cases, and we're top seventh state for new deaths. So just to say, it is very significant, even as we work through getting the vaccine out, folks need to continue to practice the three Ws, to try and socially distance, to not be hanging out in large groups, reducing the amount of time that they're going out to different places, you know, as much as possible. We know that it's, especially for you all as frontline essential workers, it can be very hard not to interact with the public on a daily basis. And so we are very excited that you all are included, and actually at the front of the line for those frontline essential workers as we open this next group, which will start on February 24. And so this is the current situation for our vaccines. We've actually administered, just at the county level, more than 13,000 vaccines. That's around 9.35% of our total population, or 12% of our population 18 and over. And we consider population 18 and over because, right now, the vaccines are not approved for children, or for, yeah, for children, or for individuals who are 18 and under, or 16 and under. So really, when we look at, you know, the total population of those who can be vaccinated, that's where that 12% number comes from. And then the second dose, we have about 5.77% of our population 18 and over, a little over 6,400, or about 6,500 second doses. And that is really the important number, because that shows us who has immunity, or who is about to build that full immunity to COVID-19. And so Francesca will talk a little bit more about the efficacy of both of the vaccine variants that we have available for us to use. Thus far, we've had about 20 different vaccine clinics. We started, if you remember back in December, they were actually called different phases. We were in Phase 1A, which was just healthcare workers who are working solely with COVID patients. And that changed in the midst of all of it to hopefully get connected to individuals who were more likely to be exposed to COVID-19. And so we were with Group 1A for a little while, and then we switched, and it was called just Group 1. And then we were able to vaccinate individuals who were 75 and older. And I was just telling Jamie this, and hopefully, this helps you understand how quickly things change for us at the Health Department and at the state level. In the middle of when we were vaccinating our 75 and older population, they actually opened it up to 65 and older. And so we were out there at the clinic. We had not heard that, because that was on one of the state calls. And so we were turning away people who were 73, because the eligibility changed literally in the middle of one of our clinics. So now, where we are is we are actually getting ready to jump into Group 3, which has actually been prioritized for early childcare staff and school staff. And so we'll talk about what that eligibility is. But all of you who are on this call would be eligible. And that is our goal between us and Novant Health, is to get everyone vaccinated who is in this group before it opens up to more people. One thing that we're seeing, we continue to see, is a very low supply of vaccine in comparison to the demand, and the number of people who are eligible to get vaccinated. It causes a lot of stress and strain, I think, on our general population, because, you know, we're trying to get those appointments filled. But we also know that we will continue to work through this. We have, at this point, I think we have two years of funding to hopefully get everyone vaccinated. Hopefully, we're not vaccinating for two years. But we do know it's going to take a little bit of time to go through all of the different individuals and go through all the different groups. And this is sort of what I mentioned. These were the groups that they were changed to. Now, we're moving into active group for Group 3. Next, we'll actually open to different industries. And we don't know what that looks like, because again, the state kind of changes things on March 10. We know that it'll include people like clergy, lawmakers. It will include food service workers, manufacturing, transportation, DSS, and other child protective services, in addition to teachers and childcare staff, and educators, and school staff. So one of the things that's really important to note is that, when you move into a new group, everyone before that group is still eligible, if they have not yet received a vaccine. We were actually feeling like we maxed out with our older adult population who were interested in coming to us, and our healthcare workers. So we're in a really great spot as we move forward, that we can dedicate the vast majority of our appointments for childcare staff and K-12 school staff. A little bit more background about how vaccines work for us. We actually have two different streams that we can get vaccines into Rowan County. So one, we get a notice from the state. The federal government provides vaccines to the state. The state then distributes those across different counties. And so we get vaccines. Novant Health Rowan Medical Center gets vaccines from the state. And we also have the Cabarrus Rowan Community Health Centers, of which there are three here in Rowan County, and they all get it from the state. On the federal side, meaning that it can just come straight from the federal government to the provider, the Salisbury VA Medical Center. Long-term care facilities receive vaccines directly from the federal government through CVS and Walgreens. And also, Walgreens itself now has public appointments. So starting February 24, your staff, you all, will be eligible to actually go to Walgreens, if that's a better fit for you to make an appointment versus coming to the Health Department, working with Cabarrus Rowan, or working with Novant Health. And then if you're a veteran, obviously, going to the Salisbury VA Medical Center, that will also, as far as I know, will also be available at that time. So how vaccine supply is kind of told to us, it's actually a very interesting process. We receive information on a weekly basis about vaccine supply. We are notified on Thursday, generally Thursday in the morning, and I am told how much vaccine is allocated for us. We have until Friday at noon to accept or accept all of the vaccine, accept some of it, or reject it, or decline to receive it. We have not declined. We do everything we can to accept as much vaccine as possible, and also to accept vaccine that we can then distribute to other partners, like Rowan Diagnostic Clinic. And there'll be more partners in the future who are providers, who don't receive vaccine directly from the state. So then we get a tracking number, and we usually get that shipment in between Friday and Monday. It just depends on the week when we get that in. And the state has told us not to hold clinics on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, because we don't know if we'll have vaccine then at that time. We then have between Thursday and Monday to give out all of the doses in our supply. And we have to then enter data that goes along with those doses within 24 to 72 hours, with everything being entered by Monday afternoon. So you could imagine, it can be pretty hard to plan ahead for holding clinics or for holding appointments, because in general, we may not know what our vaccine supply is going to be from week to week. Right now, we have an idea of our baseline, but that changes. I was telling Jamie as well, that Friday, I was told one number, and we accepted one number, and Monday, we had a different amount of vaccine show up in our inventory. So it's, you know, it is a confusing process. It's a little frustrating. But our job here at the Health Department, our responsibility, is to get those vaccines, and then have clinics and put them into arms for those individuals who want to have, or want to be vaccinated. And we also feel very strongly that we want to encourage everyone who wants to get vaccinated to do so, and provide all the information to help you make that decision. So that's just a little bit more information. We went through a process, you may have heard, and I hope you, if you hear nothing else, I hope you hear this. We had a process where it was that mass dispensing drive-through. We didn't take appointments. People just came in and came out. That is a very, very efficient way of getting out vaccines as quickly as possible. However, it caused a lot of traffic. It caused a lot of concern, especially for our 75 and older population. And so we have discontinued that. And now we are an appointment-based method, where we make appointments about 170 per hour. And so in this way, we're able to really guarantee that appointment. Nobody is wasting time, and we're still able to really be very efficient, just slightly less efficient than we were with the drive-through method. It no longer takes, you know, six hours. You don't have to get there at 4:00 AM and sit in your car to get a vaccine. It is a very efficient process. You show up when your appointment is. You drive through. You get paperwork. You go to paperwork review. You get your vaccine. You wait your 15 minutes for vaccine monitoring. EMS will be there to check you every step of the way, and then they send you on your way, and you make an appointment for your second dose. So it's a pretty efficient system, and we're really excited, if you get a chance to come out and see us at Westin Plaza and get your vaccine with us, that you'll enjoy the process. Now, we have an appointment system. You actually can go online, and those appointments will be released tomorrow after 10:00 AM for us. So we have a clinic on Saturday, but we'll talk more about the other appointments and options that will be available to you and to your staff. Again, this is just an example. We're really excited to be moving forward through this Group 3, that you all are finally able and eligible to get the vaccine. And again, that will remain open, so we'll be able to continue to offer those, because people will hopefully change their mind. We know that some people are hesitant. They're waiting to see how it goes for other people. And then whenever they're ready, they can come and make an appointment with us. And then we'll move into those other essential worker industries that folks will need to be coming from. All right. And with that, I am going to go ahead and turn it over to Francesca, who's going to talk to us about the ins and outs of vaccines.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Francesca, let's see if we can see your screen share. If not, I'll be the host.
It says it's disabled.
I will let you do it. Hold on one second.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you. Okay, can you guys see the screen? Okay? Okay, awesome. Okay, so today, we'll be talking about the COVID-19 vaccine basics. These are all good things that you guys should know before making your decision of whether you'll be vaccinated or not. So we'll just go ahead and get started. To begin, I want to review what we know about COVID-19. We know that the infection with SARS-CoV-2, the virus that causes COVID-19, can result in a range of illnesses, from mild symptoms to severe illness and even death. We do know that about 30% of people who are infected with SARS-CoV-2 don't have symptoms. This is just because if the virus affects everyone differently, and we can't predict how severe a person's illness might be. But over the past year, we've learned that we know that certain factors may increase a person's risk of getting COVID-19, such as people who are elderly, or the older population, 65 and plus, or people with certain medical conditions, such as diabetes, obesity, cancer, or even heart disease. We have also learned about actions that we can all take to help prevent COVID-19. And these are things such as wearing your mask, that covers your mouth and your nose, avoiding close contact with others, and that staying six feet apart, and that's about two arm lengths away from other people. Avoiding touching your eyes, nose, mouth with unwashed hands, and remembering to clean your hands, and frequently touch surfaces daily, and wash your hands with soap and water. And when soap and water is not available, we recommend using alcohol-based hand sanitizer that has at least 60% of alcohol. And these are all tools that we hope that people will use to help us prevent the spread of the virus. Now, we are on the verge of adding new measures for prevention, and these are the COVID-19 vaccines. There are multiple vaccines in various phases of development in the US and worldwide right now. The federal government has funding, and they're coordinating the development of the vaccines, and several of which are in Phase 3 of the clinical trials. So in Phase 3, this includes over 1,000 volunteers who are asked to participate in this trial. And researchers try to answer the questions of how do the disease rates compare between people who have the vaccine and those who don't have the vaccine? And the question that they also try to answer is, how well can people protect, can the vaccine protect people from this disease? It's important to note that safety data on these vaccines are collected in all three phases. And in the fourth phase, the vaccine is approved. Once the vaccine is approved, it's approved by the FDA, and that's meaning that the vaccine is now safe, effective, and the benefits outweigh the risk. There are two vaccines that have been approved for emergency use authorization from the FDA, and those two vaccines are Pfizer and Moderna. Both vaccines require a two-dose schedule. Pfizer requires at least, two doses given at least 21 days apart, and Moderna is given at least 28 days apart. The FDA Emergency Use Authorization is a process that helps to facilitate the availability of the medicine during public health emergencies, such as the current pandemic that we're in. The COVID-19 vaccines are being held to the same safety standards as all vaccines. I want to emphasize that the vaccines are being held to the same standards as all vaccines, because people think that, because the vaccine has been fast-tracked, that we've skipped steps in the process. And so it is very important that you to note that all the same safety standards have been taken for the COVID vaccines as well. Both vaccines are approximately 95% effective at preventing COVID-19. Many people want more information about the vaccine trials that lead to the release of the vaccine that are available now. So before the vaccines were released to the public for Pfizer, as of December 21, 2020, about 45,000 volunteers enrolled in the trials to help us get through the clinical trials of COVID vaccine. And for Moderna, about 30,000 volunteers enrolled to help with this as well. And each vaccine was taken into clinical sites across the US. For Pfizer, it was 150 clinical sites, and Moderna, 89 clinical sites. As you can see, both vaccines were tested in diverse adult populations, including minorities and older adults. And if you look on this slide, there's a breakdown of the racial and ethnic distribution for each vaccine. So for Moderna, we have 20% Hispanic, 15% African-American/Black, 4% Asian, 3% all others. And for Pfizer, it's 13% Hispanic, 10% African-American, 6% Asian, 1% Native American. And for ages 56 and 85, over 40% of people were in that trial for Pfizer. And for Moderna, 64% were ages 45 and older.
Francesca, do you mind if I share something?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think it's really important that when we look at those people who participated in the trials, that it is meant to be more of a representative sample. It's meant to show that, you know, individuals who were 65 and older, which really was our target population at first, because they had the highest mortality rates, were able to get it, and still were a part of that 95% effectiveness rate. And then the second part of it is, and I'm sure Francesca will mention this, is that these vaccines are also very effective at preventing severe illness. So even if you do get COVID, because 95% is not 100%, you're less likely to get as severely sick as you were if you did not have the vaccine. It's very similar to the flu vaccine in that sense, that typically, the flu symptoms are a lot less. All right.
Thank you. It is important to note that both of these vaccines are vaccines called mRNA vaccine. The mRNA is a new technology that teaches ourselves how to make a harmless piece of the spike protein for SARS-CoV-2. Although mRNA vaccines are new, the technology is not. So mRNA vaccines have been studied for other infections, such as Zika, rabies, and influenza. mRNA vaccines don't use live viruses that causes COVID-19. Again, I just want to emphasize that we do not use the live viruses that causes COVID-19. So the vaccine that, if you choose to take it, cannot give someone COVID-19. mRNA vaccines do not affect or interact with our DNA in any way. So what do we know about these mRNA COVID vaccines? Like I stated before, there are two shots required for both vaccines. The first shot primes your immune system, helping to recognize the vaccine, and the second one strengthens the immune response. Side effects are commonly seen in both vaccines, especially after the second dose. These are similar side effects you may experience with other adult vaccines, such as the flu vaccine and shingles. But side effects are indication that you're, there's a good immune response. So while it may be unpleasant, it means that the vaccine is definitely doing its job. And the good thing about side effects are that they are short-lived, and you should feel better in about a day or two. Some common side effects that you may experience are fever, headache, and even muscle aches. At least eight weeks of safety data were gathered after participants received their second dose in the trials. It's unusual for side effects to appear for more than eight weeks after vaccination. So again, that is saying that side effects are short-lived, and that they should not last longer than a day or two. And if you receive the vaccine, and you think you may be having a severe allergic reaction after leaving your vaccination site, call 911 to seek immediate medical care. So although a small number of severe allergic reactions have been reported, again, that's why we have the Vaccination Monitoring Station at our vaccine clinics. If you've had an allergic reaction to a vaccine before, it is recommended that you stay for 30 minutes for observation by a healthcare provider, to make sure you don't have a reaction before leaving the site. And if you haven't had a reaction to a vaccine before, you will stay the standard 15 minutes for monitoring. We recognize that many have concerns about the safety of these first COVID-19 vaccines, because they do use the new technology. But we were able to fast-track these vaccines, because researchers use existing clinical trial networks to conduct the COVID-19 vaccine trials. Manufacturing began while clinical trials were still underway. This is different, because normally, manufacturing doesn't begin until after the completion of each trials. But due to the current pandemic, they were fast-tracked. Another thing, another critical piece to note is that mRNA vaccines are faster to produce in larger amounts than traditional vaccines. Both the FDA and CDC are prioritizing review and authorization of COVID vaccines due to the current climate. Safety of the COVID vaccines is a top priority. I want to emphasize that although the vaccine timeline was fast-tracked because of the emergency use, they are all being held to the same standards as other vaccines. Before authorization, FDA carefully reviews all the safety data from clinical trials. And after vaccine authorization, FDA and CDC closely monitor vaccine safety and side effects. And this is done by using some existing systems that we have, and I'm going to talk about this in the next slide as well. But there's existing systems and new systems that have been created to help us monitor safety and side effects of vaccines. And for example, the new system that is being used is called BeSafe, which is actually an active surveillance that uses text messaging to initiate web-based survey monitoring. So people who receive the vaccine can enroll in this system, and they check in with a text message about how they're feeling and their side effects, and they report it in this system. And again, that just helps with the survey, surveillance of vaccine monitoring and side effects. Some existing systems that are in place are Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, the Vaccine Safety Data Link, and Clinical Immunization Safety Assessments. And each of these work together to help us monitor vaccine safety. Now, what are the benefits of getting a COVID-19 vaccine? So getting a COVID-19 vaccine will help you create an immune response in your body against the virus. And like Alyssa stated previously, if you do get COVID-19, but if you receive the vaccine, it won't be as severe as if you were not to have the vaccine. Also, another important piece is getting vaccinated yourself may also protect the people around you, whether that be your friends, your families, coworkers, and even your patients. And this is particularly important for people that are at an increased risk for becoming severely ill for COVID-19. And COVID-19 vaccination is a safer way to build protection. So we know that getting the virus that causes COVID-19, you'll get some sort of natural protection, which is called immunity. But however, the risk of severe illness and death from COVID-19 far outweighs any benefits of natural immunity. The vaccination will help you prevent, help protect you by creating an antibody response without the risk of severe illness. So both the natural immunity and immunity produced by the vaccines are important parts of COVID disease that experts are trying to learn more about. Vaccination is a measure to help stop the pandemic. While the vaccine is an important tool to help us stop the pandemic, it's important that, in combination of getting vaccinated and following CDC recommendations to protect yourself and others, you continue to do the things that we discussed in the beginning, such as covering your nose and mouth with a mask, avoiding close contact with others, maintaining social distance, cleaning and disinfecting, and washing your hands. It will take time for all Americans to be vaccinated. So it's important that we're wait, while we're waiting for this to be done, that we continue to take the steps to prevent the spread of COVID-19. As the vaccines become more widely available, you may hear different information and misinformation from family, friends, social media, and peers. It's important when hearing information about vaccines that it's accurate information is being spread. So we're just going to discuss some key facts about the vaccine. Fact number one, COVID-19 mRNA vaccines will not give you COVID-19. None of the vaccines in use or under development use the live virus that causes COVID-19. People experience normal side effects, such as fever after vaccination. And these side effects, again, are side effects, are signs that the body is building immunity. It may take weeks for the body to build immunity after vaccination. So if a person does get infected with the virus that causes COVID-19 before or after vaccination, this is because the vaccine has not had enough time to provide protection. Another fact, COVID-19 mRNA vaccines will not cause you to test positive on COVID-19 viral tests. Vaccines currently authorized for use or in development won't cause you to test positive for the viral tests, which would are used to see if you have a current infection. However, it is possible that you may test positive for antibody tests, which shows previous infection. This is just showing that the vaccine has triggered an immune response in your body, and showing that you have some level of protection from the vaccine. If your body develops an immune response, which is the goal of the vaccine, you may test positive on the antibody test. And another fact is, people previously diagnosed with COVID-19 should still get vaccinated with the COVID-19 vaccine. And this is just due to the fact that some people have several health risks associated with COVID-19. And the fact that the person can be infected more than once should, shows that the vaccine should be offered regardless of whether or not you've had COVID-19. And at this time, experts don't know how long someone is protected from getting sick after recovering. Both natural immunity and vaccine-induced immunity are important aspects of COVID-19 that experts are still learning more about. Experts are working quickly to learn more about the vaccine, and the CDC will keep the public informed as information becomes available. Now, we're going to cover some things that are important to know about the COVID-19. Now, we're going to cover some things that are important to know about the COVID-19. Well, we've covered some things that are important to know about the vaccines, the benefits of being vaccinated, and clarified some facts. Now you may have questions about what to expect before, during, and after your appointment. So before your appointment, it's important that you learn about the vaccines that are available and see if the COVID-19 is recommended for you. During your appointment, you will receive a paper or electronic copy of a fact sheet that tells you about the specific COVID-19 vaccine that you will be receiving. It's important while you're, during your appointment, that you let your provider know of any medical conditions that you have. This could include any allergies, fevers, if you're immunocompromised, or if you've received another vaccine prior to. During this appointment, you will also receive a vaccination record card. And on this card, it will have the vaccine that you did receive, whether that be Pfizer, Moderna. It will have the lot number on the card as well, the date that you received it, and where you received this vaccine at. And during the vaccine appointment, you will also stay on-site for monitoring after vaccination. And again, that's fifteen minutes for the standard. And if you've had an allergic reaction to a vaccine before, you'll stay for thirty minutes. After your vaccination point, appointment, um, again, we said that most COVID vaccines require two doses. So you will come back for your second dose when it's time. And again, for Pfizer, that is twenty-one days after the first dose, and for Moderna, that's twenty-eight days after the first dose. And after your appointment, expect some side effects. Again, that is normal in adult vaccines. And also, it's important that you enroll in the BeSafe system, which will help to monitor surveillance of the side effects, if any. And also, it's, after your vaccination, it's important that you continue to wear your mask, maintain your six feet distance and social distancing, and practice proper hand washing. And again, that's three W's. COVID-19 vaccination can protect you from serious illness and can reduce the risk to your family, friends, coworkers, and even your community. You have a role in increasing confidence in COVID-19 vaccination, and sharing your experience may influence those you care about. And so knowing the basics about the COVID-19 vaccine can help answer questions from your family and friends if they have any. And maybe even you, them seeing that you received the vaccine can help, you know, increase that confidence that we need to get everyone vaccinated. The CDC has a wealth of information and links available to you. You can find more information at the URL that's listed on this slide. And stopping the pandemic is going to take all the tools that we've discussed. Building vaccine competence is a critical strategy to increase uptake, and it requires a team effort. So we thank you for doing your part in helping stop the pandemic.
Thank you, Francesca. And we are here also to share, you know, that we are out at the vaccine clinics, uh, day in, day out. When we have them, we're working to make appointments. We have, you know, that, that inside information about, you know, how the process works here specifically in Rowan County. And so we want to just open it up for questions, uh, just to, to know what you all are thinking about and what additional information we can provide.
While people are asking questions, Alyssa, I'm just going to put on the screen the flyer that we just sent to facilities with the information of how they can get their spot for a vaccination.
Wonderful. And I can talk a little bit about that. So where we are right now is we are partnering with Novant Health Rowan Medical Center to work to cover both the early childcare centers and in-home daycares and our K through twelve, uh, school staff. So again, there is not enough vaccine supply to meet our demand. That's true for North Carolina, that's true for Rowan County, it's true across, um, the US. And the reason for that is just we don't have enough vaccine available for every single person. And so the CDC worked with a independent, uh, group called ASAP. I think it's, can't remember exactly what it stands for, but it's an independent group that really evaluates the data for mortality and disease, um, to identify different groups of people that we can tier or stratify in order to go ahead and vaccinate those most at risk, either for, um, death and disease or most at risk for spreading it. Uh, and so that's how they came up with those groups that I mentioned earlier. And that's why we started with the healthcare workers who are really, um, working, you know, to address, uh, COVID patients. Uh, so now where we are is we are still getting that supply from the state. It's still not enough. But it's our job to offer appointments as much as we can. And Novant Health worked it out to actually secure us, appointments for our early childcare staff. Now, um, I think I saw in the chat, or is it, is it for you from the twenty-fourth to the twenty-sixth? Yes, these specific appointments, but this is not the end-all be-all. So we would love it, you know, obviously, it's a very quick turnaround to get, um, these appointments in. But these are set aside specifically for early childcare staff, and we're working with Smart Start Rowan in order to share that link that's only for you all. And that will be at the JF Early YMCA. Now, on Saturday, the Health Department is also holding a clinic. So we worked with Rowan Salisbury Schools and the private schools to offer some appointments for them. But as a health department, we have to also offer it to the general public for those individuals who are group one, healthcare workers, group two, sixty-five and older, and then also any other childcare provider and teacher, um, who might qualify. So our appointments will go up, will go online, um, tomorrow after ten AM. And you would be able to sign up for one of those appointments, and that clinic is on Saturday, the twenty-seventh. We know that, um, that the timing is not perfect. We understand that. I hope you all understand from our presentation that we do have some limitations just based on when we get vaccine in and when we have to get it back out. But both Novant Health and I and Rowan County Health Department's goal is to continue to work with Smart Start and continue to work with our childcare centers and our schools, um, to offer appointments that are after five PM and on the weekends as much as we can. The Health Department, we're a little bit bound by the, um, the location, so we do a drive-through. It's outside. So it's, we can't be out there after dark. But, uh, the, the hospital system is working to actually staff those clinics that will be later in the evening. And they also said that sometimes after five PM, they still will be there because they'll have extra doses that they need to get into arms. So even if you don't get an appointment, I know this is not perfect, but you can always go, um, and see if you can still get vaccinated. So this is just step one. This is just the first opportunity, uh, or the first few opportunities. We know that more will be coming in the future, and we know that some people may change their mind. And we need to be continuously offering appointments specifically to these different groups. But that is, you know, that's sort of the ins and outs. At the JF Early YMCA location, uh, it is a walk-in clinic. So you actually walk in and, uh, they have a different process. For us at the Health Department, we're at Weston Plaza, which is the old mall, the old Salisbury Mall. And it's a drive-through, so you stay in your car the entire time, um, and go through the process. So a little bit different, um, you know, definitely want to be able to offer as, as best we can to, to, to suit the needs of different groups of people.
I have a couple of questions that I think might get asked to me. So while I have you, Alyssa, I'm going to ask you. So, um, directors cannot register their staff. I'm going to assume each person needs to register themselves individually?
Um, for, I have not actually tried the YMCA link, but I am assuming that it does need to be individual because it's through their MyChart. So you're creating your own MyChart, and if you're not a Novant Health patient, that's okay. You don't have to be a patient there. They're not going to force you to start going there for your primary care. It just sets up that appointment for you. But yeah, there's no way to mass upload, um, individuals to, to sign up.
Okay. Um, and the second question was, um, are you guys going to be giving different vaccines? Like the Pfizer versus the Moderna?
Moderna, yeah.
Moderna. Will you guys both be giving the same vaccine?
So I believe that, well, I, I guess I should say, I don't know a hundred percent, but Novant generally has the Pfizer vaccine, and we generally have the Moderna vaccine.
Okay. I was asked that question. That's why I asked that.
Yeah, honestly, they are interchangeable, or they're not interchangeable as in you can go get one and then get the other. But in terms of efficacy, in terms of, um, side effects, in terms of all those other pieces, you know, they're the same. So I, you know, I understand some people do have a preference for one over the other. But I would try to get your, try to get the appointment that works for you over trying to get the vaccine that you might, you know, have that, that desire to get. And then, um, we actually should hear on Friday about a new vaccine that's only a one dose, uh, which is very exciting, uh, because both of these being two doses, we know it takes, it's a, another burden on individuals who have to work and are working during these hours on the children as you're leaving, all of those things, you know. Having the two dose really impacts people that way.
I have one more question. For the Health Department sign-ups, do you have, um, like a link that I could share or put in the chat box if people are going to need to do that? For the Saturday clinic to see if they could get a spot?
So I don't have.
I was going to say I can find it and put it in the chat box.
Just yet because it hasn't. What I can do, Jamie, is I can email it to you or have Francesca email it to you at, um, or like right before ten, ten o'clock when it goes live. I can send it out. Again, I know that's not perfect because people will be working. But you can access it mobilely and go on to, to sign up. It's an event, right? So once you get a ticket, you have that ticket for seven minutes, um, in order to fill it out.
So it's Eventbrite. Do you mean ten o'clock tonight or ten AM tomorrow?
Ten AM tomorrow. And it will go on our, our website, but I'll send you the link, like, once we're able to send it directly, I'll send it to you.
Okay. And then also, I know, like, you can do call-ins as well. If you don't want to go online and make an appointment, you can call in and, uh, we can assist you with making your appointments there as well.
Do you want to, Francesca, write that number in the chat box?
I don't know it off the top of my head, so.
I can, I can do it. It's nine eight oh four three two one eight zero zero, option one. And that will actually put you into a queue if you want to call in at ten, um, or if you want to go online, uh, to make your appointment that way. And we understand that none of the processes are perfect just yet. It's really, really trial and error in figuring out what works. So if people will bear with us as we work through this together, uh, we will work with you to get you an appointment, and we will work for you to get your, um, Oh no. I think, uh, I'm reading this, a test that you're sixty-five and older or frontline healthcare worker. I would, I would select frontline healthcare worker, and then they can fix it on the backend. But you don't want it to kick you out and not be able to make the appointment at all.
Thank you, Mandy, for trying that while we were live.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and send an email to Desiree, who is their, um, chief operating officer that we've been working with.
Do you think there's maybe a deadline where it opens up to younger sixty-five or?
I think once you guys have it, they were said, they said it was going to go live, live. Some other questions that we get is there, you don't have to bring an ID or anything like that, um, to prove that you work for a childcare center. It's, that's really, number one, we want to put vaccines in arms. Number two, we want people to be honest about it, and it, we do expect you to self-certify. But you don't have to have like a badge or anything. If you forget something like that, you're not going to be kicked out from getting your vaccine. Okay, I just sent her an email. Any other questions for us? Anything else we can share?
I, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my question is, okay, uh, I saw where one of the vaccines, you have to go back to, uh, after the twenty-first day. And then the next one is, it was twenty-six? I can't remember.
Twenty-eight, yeah.
Twenty-eight. What happens if you go past that time? Will it be okay?
It, it will be okay. Um, so they actually give a range of up to six weeks. Uh, and really, that's just, it helps boost your immune system and have that, that protection up to ninety-five percent. But we have, we have people who aren't able to make it, and we just try and get them in the, the next time or the next week. And that's what I would say is, you know, work hard to, to get to your second dose date. If you can't though, still try to get it as soon as you can.
Okay, thank you. So you guys don't know yet about when the Johnson and Johnson will, um, take place. I mean, I've, because I'm thinking that's just going to be a one, a one-shot go.
I will say the difference with the Johnson and Johnson is it's, um, it's only about sixty percent effective versus the ninety-five. Which, but it's a hundred percent effective from what we've heard and what they've researched for severe illness. And so that's what's really important too, is, you know, if you get some of the symptoms like the, the loss of taste or maybe a cough, that's not as serious as, you know, ending up in the hospital. And so that's what the vaccine is meant to do. But I understand, I understand hesitancy, the, if the EUA, the Emergency Use Authorization, happens on Friday, it will still be several weeks to months before we get the, the vaccine in hand to then get it out.
Okay, that's good information. Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely.
That was a good question, Denise. And does anybody else have questions? If you have questions after, you can email me at Smart Start, and I can get with Alyssa and get you the right answer if it's something that I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely. And we have a call center, so anytime that there's a question, you know, we're happy to, to help. We're, we're, that's what we're here for. We're not here to mandate vaccines. We are here to support you all and, and making the best choice for you. You know, obviously, I want to encourage it because I want to see our county get back to semblance of normal, and I want to see everyone get their vaccine. But it's, it's also, you know, take the time for yourself, um, have questions, get those questions answered, and then, uh, you know, go get vaccinated.
I do have one other question. What time would they start vaccinations on Saturday?
It would start at eight thirty. So I will say that those appointments, there are very, there will, won't be a whole lot of those appointments because we got a lower, um, shipment. So, you know, it's one of those things, I don't know that, it's just hard to say, you, you know, you'll be able to see the link. Hopefully, you'll be able to get out of, an appointment, um, if you call in at ten. But it is, it just is what it is. We just don't have enough for, for everyone.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
We had a question. Has anyone on the Zoom had a vaccine administered? So I've had both of my doses.
I've had my first dose.
And I had my experience, my, after my first one, I had a very sore arm for about two days, two or three days. But no other symptoms in terms of like a headache or a fever. After my second dose, um, I did have a fever and muscle aches, um, especially in my knees. It was very strange. But it went away in about twenty-four to thirty-six hours. So I think I got my shot Wednesday, um, and Thursday I didn't feel well. I was still able to come to work. It wasn't, it wasn't bad enough, and I took ibuprofen and it took my fever away. And, um, Friday I was fine. No, no issue for me.
And for me, um, my first dose, the only thing I had was a sore arm as well. It was about, the first day it wasn't sore, but when I woke up the next day, it was like really sore. But other than that, no issues. And then I get my second dose next week, so we'll see how that goes.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was just going to say, she kind of hung back and like kind of watched all the process and didn't jump in to get her, her vaccine either.
Yeah, I was a little hesitant as well. Of course, like she said, take the time you need to figure out what's best for you, and that's kind of what I did. But after being at the vaccine clinics, I felt like I needed to get vaccinated, being out there every day, um, just being around people. I felt like it was important to protect myself and other people around me, so I decided to get vaccinated.
Yay, Mandy, that's great.
I was going to say, um, this past Wednesday on our Bible study, we had a doctor that came in. She's from, um, the Merlin area, and she And she was saying for us to take, you know, because some people, a lot of times before you get vaccinations, you'll take like ibuprofen or some, something before. But she suggested we take it afterward.
Yes. So that's important because there's been a study about kids who took ibuprofen before and they actually had fewer antibodies after their vaccine. So we don't want to interrupt the immune system process. So that's why they encourage you not to do it before, but to, to actually wait until after. All righty. Well, thank you all so much for having us. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for helping us, you guys, Alyssa and Francesca and everybody that attended. Check your emails for the flyer that just went out. And you can always call if you didn't get it. And I will get you the link to the Health Department as soon as it goes live for that Saturday one. But like Alyssa said, remember, there's limited vaccines for the Saturday clinic. There are more vaccines for that Wednesday to Friday. Even though it's during business hours, there's more available for early childhood. Specifically for early childhood on Wednesday through Friday of this. And we will let you know when there's other clinics and other vaccines available for the county. Soon as we hear. Thank you, Alyssa. Thank you, Francesca.